...all the meeting, November 12th. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman King.
Here.
Alderman Stowe.
Here.
Alderman Tripp. Alderman Vicaro.
Here.
Alderman Cosetti.
Here.
Alderman Philopon.
Here.
Alderman Dempsey.
Here.
Alderman Casilitis.
Here.
Alderman Yalman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Short.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell. Alderman DeLivo. Ten persons before us.
I declare a quorum. We have a late resignation from Michael Margansky. I'd like to have a motion to add that to our agenda under resignations. Mr. Casilitis, seconded by Mr. Rivers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Consideration of previous minutes is there a motion to approve previous minutes? Mr. Rivers, seconded by Mr. Dempsey. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Public session, would anyone from the public wish to speak? Would anyone from the public wish to speak? Mr. Mazzetti, please come forward. Name and address for the record.
I'd like to thank Public Works. Took a year and a half to fix Division Street. Now it's probably getting on Mary and Wickley Avenue. They're moving their feet a little bit slow, but got done.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Third and final call, would anyone else from the public wish to speak tonight? Hearing none, seeing none, public session's closed. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to speak?
I don't know. I have, is this specific issue about a blight on a property that was down at the time?
Sure, you can come forward to the microphone. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Gina Benavento. Thank you for having me. I own a property at-
Your address, please.
I'm sorry, my address is 71 Rollingwood Drive. That is in Trumbull, Connecticut. The property that I'm talking about, which I also own, is at 44 Winter Street. And that is in Ansonia. So-
I just sent them. Oh, never mind. Okay. There.
Hi, sure, I'd love to have you join me.
Sorry.
That's okay, thank you. So I'm here today because there is a blight on my property for some bushes that need to be trimmed as well as a stone wall that seems to be falling out into the side. This is Sam, he's my property manager.
Do you want me to state my name and address, too?
If you're going to speak, yes.
So my name's Sam Eddinger, my address is 17 Lewis Road in Middlefield, Connecticut. So, and I guess I spoke, I think, with the mayor or someone else, and they said that maybe it would make sense to do this during the executive session. If now's the appropriate time, I don't mind doing that, but if this is not the right time to do that, we can definitely wait till that period. So I don't know.
Yeah, I think we should wait till executive session.
You have to add it.
Well, one shot. One second, okay?
No, no, not a problem, I just- Yeah, exactly, apologize.
Could we add it to executive session?
Okay.
We have talked about that a little earlier.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Motion to add, second, Mr. Rivers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Add it to executive session. Okay, would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Third and final call, would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Hearing none, seeing none, public session's closed. Public official session, Mayor Cosetti, please.
Good evening, President Vicaro, members of the Board of Aldermen and residents of the great city of Ansonia. I want to thank the voters of this great city for putting their trust and faith in me for another two years. I want to thank each and every one of you, some of who will continue to serve on this board, and those of you who will be leaving. We will be welcoming our newest members next month. Congratulations to all of them, and I look forward to the opportunity to work together for the good of the taxpayers of the great city of Ansonia. I promise you that I will continue to fight to stabilize the budget, support education, and move forward with the many economic development initiatives we have begun. There is so much to be done, and I want to thank this board for all they have done to move our city along. Your votes and your teamwork have already, have really paid off, and I am truly grateful for that. Election season takes a toll on all of us, and for me, it is a bittersweet. I am honored to serve the residents of Ansonia for another two years, but saddened by the fact that some of you will no longer be serving on this board. Two years ago, on December 12th, 2017, I stood before you and congratulated Lori Vicaro for his appointment as president of the Board of Aldermen. As a Board of Aldermen member, it's an understatement to say that Lori took his job very seriously. Lori all but camped out in City Hall. He was here every day, learning about municipal government and teaching us a few things about municipal government. He was a Board of Aldermen member who approached his position and dedication, commitment, and dignity. Lori, the residents of the Second Ward are fortunate, and were fortunate, to have you represent them on this board. You were always there for your constituents, and you were always there for us. You gave me, you gave new meaning to the word teamwork. I know I speak for all of us when I say that we are, we were proud to serve with you over the last six years, and I want to tell you how very proud I am to call you my friend. Now, I'm not saying that some of this didn't complain that they had to hear you repeat a story at least 100 times, or that some of us would protest when you spoke about the past, when you'd have a slight tendency to do once in a while. But the truth of the matter is, we are all going to miss those anecdotal stories and your uncanny ability to remember every detail about every person you ever met. The plain truth of the matter is, we will miss you, and I will miss you the most. That is why I wanted to take this opportunity to present you, if you would please come forward, with a plaque tonight for your service over the past 10 years. President Vicaro, please come on up. For behalf of the board and the city of Ansonia, I'd like to present you with this plaque with the key to the city. Love you dearly, man. Rich, I thank you. I thank you for your dedication and your service to this board and all the boards you have served on. Martin Dempsey, you will be missed. You added a great deal to our discussions, and you helped make a difference in Ansonia. Thank you, Martin. In the Third Ward, we are still waiting the results of the recount. I want to also thank Phil Tripp, my opponent and a very good alderman, who represented the Second Ward. Phil has served on the board since 2011, and we thank you for your service to the residents Finally, I want to thank Janet Viterius Wa for her service as the town clerk. Her dedication and commitment to her office has made a positive difference. Now let's roll up our sleeves and continue to recharge this city. Happy Thanksgiving to you and your family and friends. We have so much to be thankful for. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Mr. Mariney, Corporation Council.
Members of the board, I first want to ask if we can add one item for executive session tonight. It's a matter of 44 Winter Street. It's a blight issue.
We already got that.
We already did that. Did you formally add that to your agenda? Perfect. Other than that, we have two matters to discuss in the executive session that have been a long time coming, which are final drafts or near-final drafts of both an agreement for development at the ATP of Palmer Buildings, and also a potential resolution for the Winters Brothers issue. That's a matter we'll talk about later tonight. And of course, you have an ordinance before you draft parking ordinance that you have a public hearing on. Other than that, I'd like to thank this whole board for their work over the last two years. I think you've accomplished some excellent things, and it was a pleasure to work along with you.
Any questions for Mr. Mariney? Economic Development Director?
Yep, thank you, President Vicaro, members of the Board of Aldermen. I too want to thank you for working so cooperatively with all of us. We moved a lot of things forward, and there's a lot of things going on in the upcoming months, so I'm looking forward to working on those projects with all of you and some of the new members. I guess the most obvious project is the police station, which is underway. If you've been by there, you can see the progress they're making. They're tearing up the roof, they're doing the excavation for the tower, and they're doing interior abatement of some of the contaminated materials. So that's really rolling along. We'll have updates for you periodically. We have bi-weekly meetings with the construction staff, with the chief, and with our PD Building Committee members. Just trying to get ahead of the winter schedule. They'll be moving inside, obviously, after the roof is put on, they'll be moving inside for those renovations, mechanical, et cetera. Let's see, Prindle and Pulaski is really moving forward. I think probably by the end of this month, they'll be done with that project. So sidewalks look beautiful, I think, hopefully. Everything will be in place, and I think it's a, it's a, it's quite an improvement to the safety of the pedestrians in that area and the children that are using those, will be using those sidewalks. Lot of stuff going on. SHW, 35 North Main Street, we started a partial demolition of that building, as the roof has collapsed even more than initially, and also trying to get ahead of the winter weather as well, the snow and ice that I'm sure is coming. So our demolition crew is out there, as well as a whole bunch of state officials and EPA as well, because there are some contaminants that need to be removed or moved in any event that demolition will occur sooner, hopefully, than later. And the plan is to demolish that entire site, move forward and demolish all of it. Community connectivity will be underway in the spring, I'm hoping. We'll get that out to bid. Same with the Riverwalk segments three and four. State Street, a little bit beyond the spring for that project. Set to apply for more remediation and demolition funding for our projects, because Lord knows we need demolition money. That's it for now. Any questions? Yes. Alderman Dempsey.
Basketball hoops.
Yes, knew that was coming. Knew it was coming.
Basketball hoops.
In the, in the, in the springtime, you will prison the new basketball hoops. Any other comments?
Any other questions? Greg Martin, constituent services.
Thank you, President Vicaro, members of the board as well. Just a couple of holiday cheer notes. Mayor and I were discussing maybe putting some added celebration into the downtown area for the holidays. One of the concepts was to put a nice tall Christmas tree on the top of the Armory Hills when you set the parking lights at night. It'll really stand out. Tree would be decorated with Ansonia Charger colors of blue and white. And we've got a tree donation from one of our adopt-a-spot businesses, Scott's Landscaping out of Shelton, agreed to donate a 10-foot tree for us and install it as well. And hopefully, this will be up by the end of, end of this month. Also proposed and gotten clearance from Pat Henry with the Gordon Vaselli Post 50 sign that's up there on the hill as well, so we're going to put a Seasons Greetings sign up there about five feet wide by four feet height. And have this kind of a nice old-fashioned look to it. This actually recreates a sign that fewer in the neighborhood were out here in the 60s when we came over the Maple Street Bridge. It was always a sign every holiday season that was on front of the Farrell Building. So we're going to recreate that on the hill. Another idea we're looking at as well through Dave Connolly, IT, Dave Connolly's assistants, is possibly adding some Christmas music speakers on Main Street. They could put four, four to a half a dozen. They could play holiday music, give us kind of a Hallmark movie backdrop when you're walking out of restaurants. And if it's successful, we can maybe continue it with some other music varieties going forward. Lastly, my adopt-a-spot program, Mayor's Adopt-a-Spot Program, we've got our two-year agreements are up. We have two summers involved. We have basically 16 adopt-a-spots. Probably seen them all over the city. Pretty good feedback from all the businesses, they want to continue doing it, but I'm going to get renewals out there. I mean, we may lose one or two, but as of right now, it sounds like everybody wants to come back and continue to plant and maintain the spots. So that's all I have for now. Any questions?
Thanks, Greg.
Yeah.
Kim Stephanoff, controller, please.
Good evening, everyone. Things going well in finance? Just a couple of things that I wanted to bring your attention to. We are still working on the credit card machine. We're on the Public Works paperwork was signed and submitted on Friday to the vendor that Webster uses to handle the credit card machines. So the next step will be for them to be in touch with us once everything is set up. We needed to have a merchant account set up for us in good relief, so that's the next step. As soon as that's done, then they're going to reach out to us and they'll be able to actually install and teach the Public Works employees how to use the new machine. So that is definitely moving forward. Took a little bit of time, but we are getting there. The other item is much larger. It's with our new finance software. As everyone knows, we're, had decided and gotten your approval last month on Infinite Visions, a Tyler product, they call it the Little Munus. We did get our quote from Tyler. We had some questions and some concerns, so we've been kind of going back and forth a little bit with our sales rep to make sure that everything that we needed and wanted was in place. The total cost of it is going to be, at the top level, $136,321. That's going to include $51,827 just for the software. Then they include $66,980, which is for implementation, which includes conversion of all of our old records, so we'll take our old ledgers from all the years past and bring that over and convert them into the new system, so we won't lose any of our history, project management, the hosting setup, because it'll be hosted in the cloud, and any type of training that's going to be needed. So the biggest portion, of course, with this $66,000 portion of the $136,000 total, is a lot for training. But there are estimated conservative savings of about $30,000 for us if we go ahead and do our training along with the Board of Ed, which of course is going to happen, but also last we heard, Seymour is also looking at taking Infinite Visions as their new software as well, since they're nice and close. Tyler also works with you, with other area municipalities and Board of Eds to combine your training together, especially with ledgers and that type of thing where everybody is getting those pieces. That way, everybody will just have to pay their portion of the one large fee, so it saves everybody a lot of money. The problem is, in order to place this order for the new software and move this forward, we're going to need a purchase order. That'll mean we need to have the funds in place, which we're not appropriated with this year's budget. So we're requesting respectfully, if you will allow us to use $136,321 of the fund balance as income to go ahead and pull this purchase order. If in the future we can find some of these funds from another place, we'll move them in and use those instead of fund balance income. But the only way to get this in place, pull a purchase order, order the software, and get things moving, so that we can actually keep it up and running for July 1st of next year, is to get it going relatively quickly. So I'm asking respectfully for your approval this evening to go ahead and use the fund balance as income, have that put into vote contingency, then we'll go to vote at their next meeting and request that they appropriate it into a new line for us to use for this new software.
Excuse me, Kim, this was part of the mediation that the city had with the Board of Education for the shared platform.
Yes, from what we've heard, at the last meeting at the end of October, the Board of Ed also moved ahead to request and get approval from their board as well. They'll need to get the same type of thing in place. So we'll each have these two general ledgers set up, where we'll be able to see each other's ledgers, but we're going to have to set them up as the two pieces. We'll have the city side, which is what I'm requesting this evening, and they'll have their Board of Ed side, which we'll need three of us from their board.
Can I make a motion right now?
Oh, okay.
Do you have any questions?
Mr. King was first, he had his hand up.
I just have one question regarding the credit card machine.
Oh, okay.
Simple one, you answered my other one, which was, is the school board, okay, they're a share, but they're in the wrong system with their financing.
We're going to get, to share normally, we just have our own side.
The credit card machine, what I was wondering is, like, if you set up a merchant account for most merchants, they pay a fee every time the card is swiped, plus in some cases percentages.
Right.
That's the reason why we don't take, we weren't taking tax payments in the tax office for that, because, you know, we have a partner, the credit card company, taking them. How are we going to handle that for these fees?
Well, that's-
Is the fee going to be, because technically, we can't, you can't add processing fees to a charge.
No, no, it's a municipality, we're not allowed to incur any extra fees on part of our taxpayers for other taxpayers to have this convenience of paying online. That's part of why this has taken so long to even get into place. We had to really work carefully with the bank and their merchant to handle government accounts like ourselves. So what's going to happen is, when you, let's say we bought in a few tires, and we went, they're going to charge us $4 a piece on our Public Works. They're going to swipe the credit card for $4 per tire. That's going to come to the city. There's going to be a second transaction that's going to happen, that's going to be whatever happens to be the fee. Like, we all know American Express is more expensive, and they have to visa charge us MasterCard, so it's a 2%, 200%, 3% fee. That's going to be a second transaction against their credit card. So the taxpayer will actually see two transactions, which is similar to how the tax office is set for anybody paying online. They, the taxpayer incurs that service charge, not the city.
So that, that they're agreeing to do that as two separate transactions?
Yes, as a government, yes.
But as far as the swipe and the using of the machine and the transaction itself, we're not getting charged as a municipality fee.
For the transaction.
Okay.
No, that's a cost.
Because that's, I was wondering, because it doesn't sound like much, but guaranteed you go through, but you have Public Works, but of course, the year, you know, you have a thousand people a month going in there.
It would add up.
Forty, fifty, seven charges. That's going to add up, yeah.
Right. But that's why we worked carefully to make sure that we're going, only be involved in whatever the fees that were collected, whether it be for tires or mattresses or whatever else is being dropped off. The other fee for the credit card use is going to actually go to the taxpayer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, Jeff. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Doctor. Is that 133?
136.
36.
Yeah, 136,321.
Now, is that only for the city side?
Yes. Yes, and we are-
So together, so with, so are they going to be about the same as us, too? About 100 and?
They may actually be a little bit more, because they've got some other items that they're using, since the, this software is integrated as well with some of the things. There are state requirements and important things that they actually use it for, and they have some types of things, like I guess they can hire substitutes like that, too, using the software as well. So they've got some other items that we have no use for at the city level, but at the Board of Ed, they're quite helpful. So there's, I would imagine, will come in, but we're not seeing their quote directly, but we imagine it's about the same as ours, a little higher.
Doctor.
My question was related to, so after the, the training and the conversion, all that stuff is done, is that like a one-year process, or like, will that fee go away? Will we be looking at $51,000 a year?
Yeah, well, $51,000 is basically to purchase the software, that's to get the license and everything in place. And then after that, there's going to be a yearly fee. Their yearly fee, they're saying, is $12,084, which is something that, right now, we have Phoenix, so we're not currently paying maintenance fee every year as well for our current software. It's a common thing.
Was it anticipated that that'll be the total, then, going forward, or that, some of that 66, or whatever, 1,000, 66,000 will be?
Well, the one-time fees are what they're calling the software itself, which is the $51,827. Secondary piece, which is the part that they're not sure exactly how much, the high end, it's going to be $66,980 with maximum amount of training, but they're really anticipating-
That's the training.
I guess this company believes in putting a lot of training hours in, that we believe them, they're there, and it's within the quote, but generally, no one ever uses the number of hours that they need. So they conservatively expect us to save about $30,000, but you're still probably looking at about $106,000 to purchase the software this year for our training and to get everything in Ansonia converted.
Thank you.
And they're confident with a six-month implementation by July 1st with the training? I mean, if we authorize this tonight and we're comfortable with bringing in all the past ledgers and everything like that, and getting all that information uploaded and implemented by-
They seem very confident. That was one of our concerns as well, when we spoke with the sales rep. They seem confident as long as we get the ball rolling and everything's kind of in place and with summer time, right? We can get everything up and running for July 1st.
I think we'd rather have Beau approve it first, so then it will come to this board.
The only problem with that is it'll hold it up a little bit, because I can't pull a purchase order for it until I have approval of an M. Bo to prove it. So I am going a little bit backwards here, only because of the timing.
Mr. Stone.
This, this has been, this has been discussed before. This has been discussed before, right? We've talked about this for months. I would like to make a motion to get, get the ball rolling with the 138, what?
136.
36.
321. 36, 321. Is anyone going to second that?
Put a second, yeah. Can I just make one comment? She's asking for up to them.
Should come in lower.
Should come in lower, correct.
Yeah, but the only way I can pull that purchase order is for the entire month to vote.
Any discussion? Motion on the floor, and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thanks, Kim.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Chief Coda.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have much of tonight. As you know, we talked about earlier, December 1st starts our winter parking ban, so it'll be the odd side, again, like we do every year. We'll put it out in social media, Facebook and such, and then we notify all the residents by putting notices on the vehicles to make everybody aware and get compliance that way. Sheila, every month gets to steal my thunder about the building. We are working on it, as you can see. But it's, yes, I'm sure, it's, it's going well, though, we're excited, it's other movement, and we're having the meetings, so I won't bore you with those details. You may have seen in the, in the newspapers, there were, there was a serious assault in Derby on the Riverwalk. They made a comment that Ansonia was involved, it didn't have anything to do with the Riverwalk. That same person, it was the suspect in Derby, we believe, committed three, two larcenies and a burglary in the Pershing Drive area, so we're working on those. So we're working on those. We've been able to identify that same person with some video and some witnesses, so we expect warrants for that. So that was kind of good for Derby, Ansonia, a couple other times we all got together, and we will put that together over the course of a weekend, actually. I think Derby had the assault on Friday or Saturday by Sunday. They had an arrest, so we're working on that. We also put up recently, we had a stolen vehicle on Jackson Street and up on the Hilltop area, U-Circle, Greenfield, Condon Drive, which are vehicles gone through. As we remind everybody, make sure your doors are locked, no valuables in sight. This time of year, day like today, it's cold, you want to warm your car up. You've got to be careful. People are trying to take advantage of any vehicles with keys in it. We are on the lookout. We do have some video. Thank goodness we have lots of neighbors and all over the place that help us with video. Sometimes it's a matter of identifying who's on the video, but we do have good leads on those cases, so we are working on that. Entertaining, any questions?
I just have one comment, Chief. Thank you. I saw the advisory on Facebook today. I do appreciate that. I mean, just mentioned that yesterday about the cars and we had gotten some calls from some concern. So thank you very much.
Yeah, so that vehicle was, was running. So same thing, we just use caution. I know it's cold and your windows are frosted, but you've got to pay attention because there's a, most of, it didn't go far. It went from Jackson Street to Crow Street. Juvenile ran from the scene, but they're taking the cars up there there, you know, easy target, so.
So thank you, Kim.
Mr. DeLazio was in here tonight from Public Works, so I'll probably save a half an hour on the meeting. Right?
I'll put aside you.
Okay, Mr. Stowe. Anything from Public Works in Mr. DeLazio's absence?
Mr. DeLazio gave a report, I believe, at the State of the City address, and I think he was doing well. And the tie, you know, the tires were too bad. I don't want to put the tires and the credit cards something he's been working on diligently for a long time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Is Mr. DiBacco here? Mr. DiBacco has liked to speak regarding the Board of Education tonight.
I'd like to congratulate the mayor, all the members, and I actually couldn't find time to tell you one thing. I'm alive in here. I appreciate you for helping me, walking me in. Ansonia can be a tough place, but if you have somebody who's going to pretty much take you in, I appreciate you. Thank you for being here, Seaweed, as an old man. But you, I know what the mayor said, and I believe people have been elected. It's time for all of us to kind of roll up our sleeves and get this in, get to work. And I know that things will be done together. I applaud and appreciate you reaching this financial platform. It is something that is a step in the right direction for all of us. It's the 21st century, we also consider that, and I do appreciate it. All I do ask is, we had a Dodger Day on the football the other night, so I just wanted to do a Thanksgiving Day game. He has an obvious heart for listening to Dodgers, and I hope he keeps the show going and hits. Thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports. Mr. Stowe, Finance Committee, anything to report tonight?
The all bills seem to be correct, and I do, I do...
Wait, is that a motion? Or second? Mr. Yaman? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Stowe? One second.
Second.
One minute.
It is what it is about. You could just pick it up and scroll around.
That's supposed to be your job, but you just seem to have some trouble never passing that on to somebody else.
Anything else you want to report on the Finance Committee? No? Okay. Public Works Committee? You already touched on that. The Arms Committee, Mr. Schuer.
Yeah, actually, the meeting for this, this month was, it was actually last week, was canceled and has nothing to be scheduled yet, and so I don't have a report.
Okay. The WPCA Commission, Mr. Stowe?
Plant's being managed properly and everything's going fine there for right now.
Thank you. Fire Commission, Mr. Schuer.
Very briefly, for the, for the month of October, department activity, there were sixty-one calls, highlighted by eighteen motor vehicle assists, two cooking fires, one building fire, and three electrical hazards, and additionally, the fire marshal conducted two investigation, two investigations, one of the structure fire and one electrical fire. And again, a total of sixty-one calls for the month of October.
Thank you. The ordinance committee, Mr. Yaman, anything to report?
Just thank everyone for their support for the Griffith Hospital Park and Williams.
Thank you. Housing Authority, Mr. Cassetti.
Yes, the report of the executive director for October 23rd, 2019, the meeting was held. Work on the upgrade to the duct vent hood has begun, and several buildings have been completed. The building, John J. Stevens Apartments, 75 Central Street, will be prepped for new paving, parking lot to be completed by the end of October. St. Vincent de Paul will be coming to John J. Stevens Apartments, 75 Central Street, Thursday, October 24th, to distribute free food to the residents if needed. The public housing authority plan was submitted to the HUDD Hartford Field Office successfully, and the harvest luncheon that was held at Monsignor Heinz, right? Is it?
Heinz.
Heinz?
Heinz.
Okay. Apartments on October 16, 2019 was a success, and that's it.
Thank you. Any other committees?
Mr. Yaman, go three for four on the regionalization committee. There was not a meeting held last month, but we are anticipating that the, the report from the contractor will be as to whether or not feasibility for regionalization, and that'll be up to the committee at that point in time to sort of steer it as to where we want to go with regionalization. So I encourage everybody to come out. The next meeting is November 25th at 7:00 PM at Derby Middle School. So I encourage anybody that wants to attend, please come out. The more the merrier. We're going to need people giving us feedback and input, so.
That's the middle school in Derby.
Yes, 7:00 PM, November 25th.
I'll see you then. Thank you, Mr. Yaman. Okay, municipal reports. There are motion to accept the, the report from Bo, eight motions. Mr. Cassetti, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Mr. King. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion to accept the controller approvals. Mr. Yaman and Mr. Cassetti seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to accept the land use department reports. There are motion. Mr. Rivers, seconded by Mr. Cassetti. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tax collector report and request for refunds. Mr. Casalitis.
I make a motion to accept the tax collectors' report and request for refunds in the amount of one thousand and twenty-one dollars and eighty-two cents if found to be correct.
There are second? Mr. Dempsey, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Accidents and claims. Mr. Stowe?
I want to mention something about the tax collector's report. The tax collector's office, I've been, someone has told, communicated to me that Cass Creek, the company that's doing the foreclosures, we're having some issues with processing. Is that true?
I think, I think what we want this board to say is to please go forward with purchasing more tax liens. That'd be very helpful if you could direct the departments to move forward with, with selling more tax liens. There are more tax liens that need to be sold. We need the revenue generated, and I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea, and I feel if this board would, would direct the staff, we, we'd have an easier time of it. While tax liens are not easy things to do once you, once they're processed and sold because residents will come in, not understand, you know, they have to go to the, the buyer of the liens. It's a little bit more work on the departments, but I believe it generates a good amount of income for, for the city, and I, and I think it's a, I think it's a, I think it's a highly recommended procedure that many community, many healthy communities adopt.
So we instituted this practice several years ago. Prior to that, the city had used foreclosures as, as the main means of tax collection. Another means of tax collection, property sales. The lien sales are something else entirely. You put out liens to bid, private company buys them and pays the city a hundred percent or more for those liens. So the city has the advantage of getting the funds right up front. The complication Sheila mentions is that when the lien is bought, say you owe taxes, the tax lien is bought by the private company, now you owe the private company. That does create a little bit of extra work, but the advantage to the city is pretty enormous because you're making sure on a timely basis that all of those liens are being satisfied, and you now have the funds put into the reserve. So it's, it's really helped us a lot on both the city side and the WPCA side, and certainly for the mayor's office, we would encourage that the practice that was put in place several years ago continue as it's really reaped the benefits for really the whole city or for our taxpayers, making sure that we get a timely return on the liens. It's actually in lieu of, in place of the city doing foreclosures or other means of collections.
Okay, so what do you need from us?
We'd like a vote consideration, and if possible, a vote to, to recommend continuing the practice.
Before we go, the way I understood it, because the first time I heard this was in the WPCA, that, that they, it was overly complicated to do, to process these, so therefore, you know, I don't have time to do it, so to speak. The way I'm saying it is nicer than how it was said. Now, these individuals come to work, like I would go to work to a job, and then they're asked, could you do this work? And I don't understand how something so important that saves the city money, or that an individual could do something like that without fearing of losing their job. I mean, if you don't want to do your, you know, it's like where I, where I work, it's non-union, and if I said something like that, I, I don't know where I would be. They'd listen for another job, and then if they find out that I don't do what I'm told, they won't hire me either. That's how it would look in my, in my world. So I think we need to be very firm about the message that we're going to deliver here.
Yeah, and I think simply said, we can't afford not to do it.
It's, it's, we, we passed this years ago, three years ago, I believe it was.
Yeah, we don't need, I believe that, you know, there is...
Well, there is no, there is no real deliberation as far as employees, what they have to do here. I mean, this is, this is...
It would be nice to have a motion from this board that you still support that means of collection.
Why would, I don't know. Mr. Yaman, do you have any suggestions about wording?
I mean, the program's been out there. I mean, I'll say is that there were safeguards designed in the program themselves, and these are older liens, and, you know, I mean, I think the department should be doing their jobs and continuing to, the practice. If the mayor's office is asking for a motion to encourage the departments to do that, so we...
Yeah, well, I'd like to see us send the message out and then, so that next month we're going to be able to see it as, as it been rectified. We cannot, in my opinion, we cannot let this just perpetuate, you know? So I don't know exactly how to word that. Corporation counsel, do you have any suggestions?
I think a simple vote of the board is enough, a simple...
For now? Okay.
Make the motion.
Making the motion?
Is it moved to direct the tax department to continue the practice of selling tax liens? That's what I heard.
Whose motion was that? Mr. Stowe's?
The WPCA.
The WPCA and tax department.
Yes, full, yeah.
Or the WPCA.
Mr. Stowe's motion. Who seconded it? Mr. Schuer? Any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Stowe.
Thank you.
Mr. Casalitis, accidents and claims?
They don't have any.
Okay. Right. No appointments? Communication, we're taking the communication off the agenda for tonight. Mr. Yaman, yes?
No.
Any new business, gentlemen? Mr. Casalitis, please.
Chief, two years ago, we decided to give her the police mission board as an alderman subcommittee, and before I leave tonight since my last meeting, I think it's very, very vital that every time you guys have your meetings, that you have somebody there to give you guys answers or direction or that can help midway instead of having to wait to come here every month. And I think it's a good tool to keep in communication with you guys and everybody move together to have somebody there. Do you agree?
Yes, yeah, we had any questions or concerns, even with this ordinance at work, we were able to contact each other and kind of get the ball moving prior to waiting for a full vote or board and continue the progress we're making, so.
So tonight, I'd like to make a motion that we reinstate our alderman subcommittee board with at least two aldermen from this board to attend the police mission meetings, so this way there's an open line of communication and things can keep moving forward, especially because we have the building project and more ordinances coming.
Mr. Stowe?
I just, that's a fantastic idea. I just, are we going to give a slot or two to the new alderman?
Eddie Alderman.
Open, so we have an alderman or two, whatever from the...
At least two aldermen.
In the election, you know, we should, I think, just put someone in there on it. Is that agreeable? Does that make sense?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any other new business? Okay. Old business, the tax incentive regarding Farrell Pamimi. John, is Sheila going to speak on that?
I think we should defer it until Sheila's back.
Ordinances, Mr. Yaman, we talked about limited parking ordinance. Do you want to speak on that?
That's the ordinance that we have the public hearing on. It can pass back in July, so.
Okay. Done or resolutions? We have one resignation from Michael Marganski, dated November 6th, 2019. Admiral Mayor Cassetti, my congratulations on your reelection as mayor of Ansonia. Due to conflicting schedules, I am unable to fulfill my responsibilities as Ansonia representative for the Northern Valley Health District Board of Directors. Please accept this communication as my resignation. I greatly appreciate your support and wish you all the best regards. Michael Marganski. Motion accept?
Motion accept, Senator. Thank you.
Sir second? Mr. Ripper seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. So we're waiting on Sheila's answer?
Yes, we could defer that vote, for example, after the executive session.
Okay.
There's nothing else to do. Do we have a vote on the ordinance?
It was done in July. We did in July.
Motion going to executive session. Mr. Schuer, seconded by Mr. Cassetti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We're in executive session. John, what do you want?